Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the March 13th, 2013 Lorain County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Kokowski has the dog this morning.
It's not quite a dog yet. One of the cutest little puppies we've ever had. It's about four to eight weeks old, six to eight weeks old, boxer, boxer mix. Very calm, has a great little personality, just cuddling up here, makes somebody a great
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments today?
pet. She's not going to be available, it is a female, she's not going to be available until Saturday
Requisitions?
in case her owner comes to find her.
So moved.
Second?
I can't imagine not coming to find this little cutie.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was looking at the adult probation.
So, come down to the dog kennel on Saturday and pick her up, or come and see what other
They had three vehicles. It was fifty-six, or five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
dogs we have. We have 21 dogs to choose from. So, isn't she a cutie? Look at her.
And, just wanted to bring up for discussion, maybe we want to hold this one.
She is so sweet. She's sleeping. I'm just going to hold her for the rest of the day. Thank you.
I thought maybe they would have been over here. But they're looking at these vehicles. We have vehicles in our fleet that are underutilized. Instead of them getting new vehicles, maybe we could go through and transfer some vehicles
Okay.
from the Commissioners' fleet over to adult probation.
Job and Family Bills?
Mr. Cordez, do we have additional fleet vehicles that we could give up and give
So moved.
to the?
Well, Commissioner Williams and I have had several discussions on the vehicles
Second? Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
over the last year or so, and I don't believe we have excess vehicles, and I've told him
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
that.
Second?
But we differ on that.
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
They're not always utilized, and there's days when there's, and there could be several
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
days when they're not being utilized, but when I have to have four or five vehicles,
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
I have to have four or five vehicles.
Mr. Kaloe?
That's why some of them are older, they're still in rather good shape, but they have
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
a little miles on them.
Aye.
Appropriations?
We have vehicles from the late, mid-'90s that we're still using, and so we would have
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
to be able to provide transportation for people that, when they needed it, when things
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
were compressed, or we have to come up with a different policy on reimbursing for mileage.
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Because what am I supposed to tell people when they come up and they want to check out vehicles and I don't have any?
Well, I know, it's not that we just have four or five vehicles. We have a lot of vehicles, I believe nineteen vehicles. That's not correct.
I don't think there's nineteen in the fleet.
There's only one vehicle, right?
It's, just to clarify that.
Okay.
They're purchasing one vehicle, but they're buying out of three separate accounts. That's why there's three separate requisitions in there.
Right.
It's not three vehicles.
But they have the money in their?
Grant funds.
Pardon me?
It's grant funds that they're using, but they're splitting the cost between the three grants.
Okay.
For one vehicle.
But we can still talk about the vehicles.
Right. I'm not talking about them looking at that many vehicles, it's just our fleet. But, you know, we have vehicles that are from the '90s that have, you know, 20,000 miles on it, some of them that are 40,000.
They're all low mileage.
Low mileage vehicles, forty, age, so they're rarely being used, most of it is just inner travel. So, possibly looking at what the state does, or even the federal government, where instead of having a large fleet, actually doing reimbursement for it.
Well, didn't we do that four or five years ago? The question came up and we had issues with Corso and making sure all of our employees had riders on their personal policies.
There's several issues.
This is the first time this was broached.
Well, there's several issues, and Commissioner Williams and I walked through a few of them last night. One, we would have to be an identified insurer on their policy, and people that drive their vehicle on behalf of their employer want that because they don't want to be denied coverage, nor do we want to be the coverage of first choice, should they not have a waiver on their policy. Secondly, we can't force somebody to use their own vehicle on county business. And third, we have to come up with a reimbursement policy because presently we don't have one. We only have several identified people that are allowed to use their own vehicle, and everybody else is delegated, relegated, excuse me, to the fleet vehicles. I don't know that we have nineteen available. I can recheck what's actually in the fleet that gets checked out. We have some vehicles that do not get checked out, that are used in the course of other business. But, Commissioner Williams is, in my mind, we're both agreeing to some point, we do have all the vehicles with low mileage on them, and we do take pretty good care of them. It could be a burden, and we have to run them to the shop and do those things with them, but absent having a way of letting somebody do their business when they need a vehicle, I don't know what else to do.
I know, like, the state auditor, everyone that works for the Auditor's Department, they don't get state vehicles. They use their personal vehicles and then they get reimbursed mileage. And we had this discussion. Now, the auditor, maybe it's too low, I believe it's under forty cents a mile. Federal government, congressmen, their employees, they get reimbursed at fifty-six and a half cents, but they're using your own vehicle.
Didn't you develop a policy of like three cents a year ago?
Well, we have this fleet of vehicles that aren't being utilized. So it's either start utilizing the vehicles, or maybe start shrinking them.
I agree. Most of the mileage is in and about. It's northeast Ohio mileage, right around Lorain and Cuyahoga, and occasionally the trips to Columbus. But other than that, we're not doing a lot of highway miles on those vehicles, never have.
Yeah, and, you know, for trips to Columbus and where you're going from point A to point B that are over a certain mileage, I think it would even be cost effective to even take a look at just getting a rental car, instead of having, paying for the insurance, the maintenance, and everything that goes on it.
There's places that do that. I know of a couple agencies that allow that. Some people don't want to put 500 miles on their vehicle, they got a leased vehicle, and they don't want to put the miles on it because in the end of the day, by the time we reimburse them, they lose money. All those things have to be taken into consideration in any policy that's adopted. I'm not saying it can't be done. Certainly can be.
And what I'm not saying is that we have to get rid of all the vehicles. There are going to be cases where you do need to have vehicles, you know, we spoke about this yesterday, actually, but actually reducing the size and then taking a look at, I know Domestic Relations, I was having to talk with them, they go through, they do a lot of reimbursement of their mileage. They also have vehicles now that are in need, too. She was telling me that they could use one of our vehicles. They have a transmission that just came, that went out to do the repairs, it's going to be more costly than what the value of the vehicle is, too, so.
As far as vehicles goes, so we're clear with the public, we haven't bought any new vehicles in a lot of years, and the last ones that I purchased for the fleet were stripped-down Ford Focuses. So, they're not driving around out there in Crown Vics and, you know, fully loaded vehicles. We bought the least costly vehicles we could, and probably in the ugliest color we've ever seen, too. So, they're not highly desirable vehicles, and Janice actually works with checking the vehicles out when she's not performing her many other tasks. And there are days when we don't have enough vehicles. You can look to her.
That's true.
She checks them out.
There are days.
How many days out of the year would you say that occurs?
That would be hard, just off the top of my head, to really, I mean, I could certainly take a look back at our records.
But, and what it comes down to is also doing the scheduling and taking a look at where the vehicles are being utilized. I know a lot of times, just walking the city of Illyria, you'll see the vehicles parked over at Moss's because they're having a meeting there, so some people will take the vehicle to drive over to Moss's.
Our vehicles?
Our vehicles. It says Lorain County on it.
Well, it could be from the county engineer's office, it could be, you know, yeah, we're not checking vehicles out to go to Moss's for a meeting or lunch or anything else. Remember, I told you, Commissioner, sometimes the way the public perceives what's said, you know, it did.
It says county, doesn't mean it's under the auspices of the county commissioner.
Right. I mean, all the county vehicles have the Lorain County sticker on them, and so that vehicle, I'm going to say, I'm going to jump, take a leap of faith here, we didn't, nobody checked it out to drive to Moss's.
Well, I know when we went through the number that was on the vehicle, we couldn't actually locate, because I did, I wrote down the vehicle number, brought it back, and we could not locate which fleet that belonged to.
Well, if it had a county tag on it, we could find it for you.
Well, I took a picture of the actual number on the side of the vehicle.
Send it to me and we'll chase them down with extreme prejudice. The, again, you know, I don't want to leave a perception out there of those things happening. We haven't bought vehicles, I want to say in probably six or seven years, six years?
2007 or 2008.
I think the Focuses are '07s.
'07s, so that would be six years, six years ago, and those were Focuses. We bought a bunch of them, and I remember that one of the senior prosecutor staff coming over and asking me how they were going to fit in that car, or how they're going to fit more than two people in that car. But, we made do with them because of the economic situation where we bought the lowest-cost alternatives.
Well, we know it costs a lot to drive a car, and when you figure the license plates and the insurance and all that, so maybe give us an idea of how much it costs to keep those cars, just on a yearly, you know, average, and then if it would be beneficial to go with the route that Mr. Williams was talking about. And just having people either rent a car or get paid reimbursement.
Hard for me to give you that. I mean, I look at the data, but once again, I would caution that we're going to have to be a named insured. Jerry, you know, I don't know much about how that works. Do you, counsel, can you?
Yeah, we would, well, we would have to have coverage that, you're talking about our own policy?
Well, I think they need to name us on their.
Oh, on the individual insurance policies?
Right.
Yeah, they have to get, I don't know the exact deal, but you would have to get a rider that would.
But you only need a rider if you're going over so many miles, because, I mean, let's take a look at private industry. You don't have to get a rider if you're using your vehicle to go from point A to point B, but you're still getting reimbursed for the mileage.
I always had, all my commercial vehicles and my personal vehicles.
Well, commercials.
My employees' salesmen in my company always carried business if they got in an accident.
But your salespeople, they're using the vehicles, or they're using it to go from point A to point B multiple times. I'm talking about, we don't need to have, all the employees aren't going to need to have riders if they're just going from, say, one meeting, I don't know, someone's going to go from here to City Hall in Lorain, they're not going to need a rider on that.
I couldn't tell you.
Professional insurance would cover them if they were to cause an accident.
We can check on it. I don't know the specifics on it. The other thing, another big problem for me is workers' comp, portal-to-portal issues. You know, I always like when somebody checks out a vehicle to go somewhere because I now know they're on our time. If anything happens, then we get a, this way, they're within the scope of workers' compensation. We know when they reported to work and when they left work. When they're using their own vehicles and something happens out there, they never know what is going to be claimed, where they were, and whose time they were actually on their own or ours. I certainly hate to get somebody backing out of their driveway saying, "I was going to go to a meeting over here on behalf of my employer," so it's a workers' comp issue when they get hit backing out of their yard. So, there's a lot of those, I know that, I'm not trying to put barriers up, but it's a lot more complicated than most people would think when you make those decisions, and the liabilities are, can be significant. And then again, they may never materialize.
Right. I just know, you know, we talked to other counties that have done this in the past. State level, they do it, federal level, they do it.
They do.
So, it's just something to take a look at. I'm not saying it's the right way to go, it's just an option to take a look at this.
It'd just be a terms of employment issue with employees who drive their own vehicles. Because if they've got a leased vehicle, again, they're not going to be driving their own leased vehicle, an additional three or four thousand miles a year if they're on the road a lot.
I'll try to get some facts and figures.
Yeah. Well, this is, this requisition is for one vehicle, and it's grant, so you're okay with this now, or, and just the rest of it up for discussion?
I'll go ahead and approve this since it is with grant money. One thing I would like to do, though, is have them, if you could get with Domestic Relations as well, and take a look if there is a vehicle that could help them out.
I have offered quite a few vehicles over there over the years, so I'll certainly talk to my friend. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay, under Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kaloe. I do have a few personnel issues at Job and Family Services, the Collection Center, potential hires, and also Golden Acres. And I would like also to talk to you about the ongoing labor negotiations at the county home with the Teamsters, and also the potential purchase of real estate. Those three topics are allowable for executive session discussions. So that's the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. We go into the executive session and we talk about those identified issues. Thank you.
Okay, number 10, under Solid Waste, approve a request from Lorain County Community College, Connect Lorain County, a nonprofit organization, for 25 refurbished computers to use every other month through September of this year, to a maximum of 100 from the Solid Waste Management District.
Mr. Bailey?
Good morning, Commissioners. First, to report a little bit about Connect Your Community, which went on from 2010 to 2012. We did college-train 2,197 people in the computer classes for 25 hours each. We distributed 1,370 computers out of the center, back to those people in need who needed a computer, needed a PC. So, it was a very successful program. We're trying to salvage part of Connect Your Community, which was a federally funded stimulus-funded program. And with Connect Lorain County, which has now been organized by the college, they have two and a half full-time instructors now, that are still teaching, Connect Your Community and connecting people to internet that don't have that training, don't have that access, senior citizens, people in need. And they're asking for 100 computers over the period of the year from our program that we have successfully run now for 10 years. So, that's what the request is for today, all right?
So, once they complete the computer training, then they, the class, then they are offered a computer if they need one?
Right. Rebuilt by RET III Job Corps in Cleveland, and come through our office. Parts leave our building, go to Cleveland, reorganized, rebuilt, come back, and they're distributed back out, so.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, instruct the clerk to advertise for proposals for the Lorain County Engineers' Office for the Whitney Road Bridge, number 0214, replacement in Pittsfield Township.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Number 12, approve to accept and generalize the 2012 report on bridges for Lorain County.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize the sheriff to apply for the 2013 through 2014 Drug Use Prevention Program grant in the amount of $23,567.44, which represents 50% of the base salary of one dear officer for the nine-month school year. Said local match is $23,567.44 to be paid from the account number sheriff's salary.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you. Commissioners, with everything that's been going on down at the state with regard to the state budget and, pardon me, some of the restrictions that may be placed on the county, I've been taking a look at some of our bond issuances for the last few years to see if we couldn't possibly find some refinancing opportunity to lower our overall cost, which is great, but I'm doing that now because I'm worried that we may have a problem with our ratings later on if we lose the ability to indicate that we have piggyback tax left in reserve to raise revenue should the county run into some significant difficulty. I have seen some testimony on that down at the state lately. I don't know, Commissioner Kaloe, have you introduced it to the CCO after we spoke?
No, they have, they actually did a paper on it, so there's major concerns. Kim Edwards from Ashland County, is Kim from Ashland? Kim Edwards was testifying on that last week.
Well, it's a huge issue. You know, I've done the county rating with the Moody's and Fitch's and Standard and Poor's now for over a decade and a half, and I know from working with them, and Commissioner Kaloe, you've made some trips to meet with them with me, and you know how pressing some of those rating presentations can be with regard to the questions and things they're looking at. With that, I do have one opportunity from 2004 issuance to save about $200,000 if we refinance some outstanding debt of about $3 million. Rates are historically all right now, we'll be able to net out $189,000 in savings. It's a general obligation, so that'll help us. It's not a sewer bond where we don't receive any benefit, although I'm looking at those, if we can save those folks some money in their assessments, we should, their assessments will just end a little bit sooner. So I'm going to be, I'll give you this later today, I want you to take a look at it, but I like to put it on the agenda next week, and you can look at the numbers, but I think it's time that we go to market with this before we have to explain too much to the rating agencies what may or may not be a problem this summer.
$189,000 is over a 20-year.
Correct. The, if you put back, Commissioner, you'll see the debt schedules right here. And, no, it's not over 20-year, it's over the, it'll go for the.
Just the balance of what's due on the notes, 12 or 13 years, nine years, whatever it might be.
Right, exactly. I don't see extending them out any further. We did that with the Justice Center notes, but with these, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
But I'll get another copy of that, and I'll be looking at all of our bonds very closely this spring to see if we can find some opportunities. Again, I'm not going into panic mode with this, but I think our ability to do a refi is better right now than it may be in the summer, given, depending on what the state does.
Right, agreed.
And I don't have any additional comments this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Anis?
Commissioners, I have one matter of pending litigation that I need to discuss in executive session. And then I would just mention, I have driven in one of those stripped-down Focuses. Jim, Jim has under, I mean, you almost have to pedal it.
Well, the reason, we do try real hard to stretch the dollars, and I think it was the last car they made with hand-cranked windows and everything else, and it is, it's not a lot of luxury there.
At least it's automatic, right?
Barely.
Automatic, you have to pedal it. It's funny. Okay. I have no report this morning.
Busy week. Well, last Wednesday, the Board of Commissioners met with the leadership Lorain County class, had a nice hour-long forum. I'd like to thank them for asking us to participate. There was very good dialogue, very good questions. Also had Sheffield, Sheffield Lake Schools groundbreaking, I attended for the new high school, well, actually, seven through 12, long-term project. Congratulations on them finally moving forward on that. Commissioner Williams and I attended Nawaka this past week, a lot of discussion regards to the turnpike. I'd like to thank Senator Manning and the Transportation Committee for adding the amendments in regards to 90% funding staying north of Route 30. Also had Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting this week, talking about not only the grants, hopefully everybody who hasn't turned in their grant yet, Keith, you want to help me out, let's call them out. We're trying to give out the community grants based on the $300,000 formula, based on last year's recycling numbers, and we have a few communities who have not yet turned in their numbers, and we can talk about them out here, maybe they'll hear us.
Well, I don't have the list with me today, Commissioner, but there are about six communities that haven't updated their recycling numbers, and today, the community grants are based on how much revenue we take in in the previous year, which we have a $300,000 pot, it's divided by the number of tons you recycle. So, the more you recycle, and if you don't get those numbers reported to us by April 1st, we're going to have to shut it off at that point, the Policy Committee, and send their recommendations down in the next April meeting.
At that point, there'll be no disbursements to those communities who didn't report, and the $300,000 pot gets.
Divided amongst others, yes.
Amongst others who have done their jobs.
Yes.
So, if your community hasn't reported your numbers yet, please get it done, or there won't be any dollars forthcoming.
Do we send them any correspondence?
Oh, yeah, phone calls and everything else. It was a long discussion, you'll stay on that. Also, was invited to Flickner's and Great Lakes Smoke Me Church, State Director Daniels from the Ohio Department of Agriculture was there honoring them during Farm to Table Week for the state of Ohio. Ron Pickworth, the president and other Farm Bureau, and Al DiVincenzo and other staff were there, myself, Mayor Rittenour attended. Congratulations them for all they do, there's new legislation passing, they'll start to be able to sell their product out of state, not just within the state.
Well, not a lot of people realize what a big employer Flickner's has become. They probably have about 125 employees now.
Yep.
So, they're, not only are they a homegrown business, but they're, in this day and age, they're one of our larger employers.
I mean, state-of-the-art facility, they're doing some great things, they're in a lot of the grocery stores.
You've been to the Smoke House, right, and all that stuff down there?
Plenty at times, man. Still looking for my lamb from last year's county fair, we can't quite figure out where it got put at after it got slaughtered.
So the more you recycle, and if you don't get those numbers reported to us by April 1st, we're going to have to shut it off at that point, the Policy Committee, and send their recommendations down in the next April meeting.
At that point, there'll be no disbursements to those communities who didn't report and the $300,000 pie gets.
Divided amongst others, yes.
Amongst others who have done their jobs.
Yes.
So if your community hasn't reported your numbers yet, please get it done or there won't be any dollars forthcoming.
Do we send them any correspondence?
Oh, yeah, phone calls and everything else. It was a long discussion, you'll stay on that. Also was invited to Flickner's and Great Lakes Smoke Me Chers. The Director Daniels from the Ohio Department of Agriculture was there honoring them during Farm Table Week for the state of Ohio. Ron Pickworth, the President and other Farm Bureau, and Al DiVincenzo and other staff were there, myself, Mayor Rittenhour attended. Congratulations them for all they do. There's new legislation passing. They'll start to be able to sell their product out of state, not just within the state.
Well, not a lot of people realize what a big employer Flickner's has become.
Yep.
They probably have about 125 employees now.
Yep.
So they're, 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 not only are they a homegrown business, but they're, in this day and age, they're, they're one of our larger employers.
I mean, state-of-the-art facility, they're doing some great things, they're in a lot of the grocery stores.
You've been to the Smoke House, right? And all that stuff down there?
Plenty at times, man. Still looking for my lamb from last year's county fair. We can't quite figure out where it got put at after it got slaughtered. They also own Kettle Brothers in, what's that, Huron County? Or Erie County? Kettle Brothers. It's right there at the split.
I'm, I'm not sure which county it's in.
But congratulations to them. End of my report.
Yeah. As Commissioner Kalo stated, we had the team, our leadership Lorraine County, great event. Wanted to thank everyone that contacted me. And want to apologize, say, we weren't able to meet with them after hours at the, what's the restaurant now that's moved from?
Sorrento's?
Sorrento's. So great facility out there. Besides the Nawak meeting on Saturday, I actually attended the Wild Game Dinner at the Rochester Rod and Gun Club. Great event out there. Individuals had a wonderful time. Coming up in May, they're going to actually have a fundraiser for an individual from North Carolina, a child that's actually putting together funds to help support the troops and that. So I want to get more information on all that you know about that. They're going to be looking at trying to have different competitions. I know, Ms. Kukowski, you talked about getting your CCW, might be a good time to go out there and practice. They kind of do like a cowboy range out there, show off your skills with the handgun. And then also the money goes towards a good cause. Had something else, but I forgot my calendar, so I'll say it, send in my report. Oh, I'm sorry. Senator Dale Manning, I want to thank her very much. Wednesday, last Wednesday meeting, we had an individual that called about, or came up here regarding the weight limit increase.
I took that, too.
I spoke to her Wednesday on it. She called me back on Monday, told me that she received numerous calls from our sheriff, from our mayors and from other commissioners throughout the, in her district. And they're looking at changing that amendment. Still going to have to go through and be voted on, but she's in support of keeping that at the 80,000, so.
Yeah, she had a big turnout in discussions. I read in the Dispatch this morning and they had a big turnout against that. So there's only a couple of people who have self-serving interests who are introducing that legislation. Everybody else is against it.
Right. Well, and the thing they came down to is they said, "Well, it's going to bring jobs." Well, where's your data to prove it?
There's no jobs.
And, right. If you can't do it, then, you know, it doesn't make sense to do it. Safety, additional maintenance on the local roadways. I can see why it's going down and hopefully they will vote that down, but good to talk with Senator Manning and get all the information on what she's seeing down in Columbus. So I appreciate her time and appreciate everyone that did call her to voice their opinion as well. End of my report.
Okay. Board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment, anybody wishing to address the board? Sunshine Week, David?
Thank you for mentioning that. David Ashenhurst Oberlin, something that came up earlier and something I was not going to say, brought up something else that I should say. I was down in Columbus on the 6th of March for statewide Lobbying Education Day on fracking and oil and gas interests and met with Senator Manning's staff and with Representative Dan Ramos himself. I would have stopped in on Mr. Lundey, but it was also Public Library Day and two other things, and he had an office full of people and wasn't there for a, sort of a spontaneous visit. I'm going down on, well, next Tuesday, I'm going to go from Chicago straight to Columbus for the League of Women Voters Lobby Day, which is going to include some lobbying on fracking and stuff like that. There are 33 chapters of the League of Women Voters around the state. Now, that's not 88 chapters, but it is 33 of the counties. And it occurs, and I didn't this time go for the mental health lobbying day, and I didn't go this time for the environmental lobbying day. But it occurs to me when I go down there that I know a lot more about the County Commissioners Association than most of the other people that are around there. It seems to me something I would suggest all of you carry back to your colleagues at the Commissioners Association, Republicans and Democrats and people who are on, in officer positions on the association and not, that it would really make sense for the government relations person from the County Commissioners Association to show up at some of these things, meet all these local people from around the state and tell them what the County Commissioners Association is and what their priorities are that line up with the priorities of these various interest groups that are down there.
Okay, David, let me interrupt you real quick. We have four different people who do government relations based on certain subject criteria.
I understand.
There's not, I mean, Cheryl Subler oversees the entire department.
I understand.
Probably the way the Commissioners Association does it currently, if you're looking for legislative priorities, and I introduce them every year here from the Commissioners' floor.
I understand.
Is probably the website for those, maybe versus them going to see each and every group, because there's hundreds of groups.
Well, there are hundreds of groups, but they're not all statewide and they don't all have everybody around. And I'm not saying that all four of them go, and I'm not even saying that somebody go. But, you know, on the, on the literature table, if there were an information sheet, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I know this isn't, you know, we're not there to meet our county commissioners and we don't expect any county commissioners to be with us. But the fact that you've got people that are seeing your legislative delegation and you don't know about it and they don't know, you know, what they're saying, we don't all report these things to you, but we're down there and we're talking about things that we also talk about you with. And we talk with you about. But I guess what I'm saying is, it seems to me that because the county commissioners have these priorities and they are shared with these local people who don't know anything about the commissioners, it just might make sense to make these individual grassroots lobbyists more aware that their county commissioners have priorities as well, so that when we go see Dan Ramos, we might know that the county commissioners have also met on this topic or have testified on it or something like that. It just is, because the state is organized by counties, because there's a whole lot that happens that state law and county administered, you know, there is no county law, there's just county enforcement of state law and all that kind of stuff, that it would make sense to have a greater understanding by our local League of Women Voters of what the Commissioners Association is and what it thinks. Because we don't go see our, I, I mean, none of us go see the Commissioners Association when we're down there. And it's 33 counties at least that are going to be down there next Tuesday, talking about redistricting, talking about fracking, talking about sunshine laws and whatever else. It just occurs to me that just for you, for their governmental relations people, to know that these meetings are going on and that probably there's an educational opportunity for the association with these local constituents, to let them know what's already happening in their localities would be a benefit to the association and to its members.
I'll convey that, David.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? I'll make the motion to go on executive session as outlined by the county administrator and assistant county prosecutor.
Second?
Any discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting.